And I didn't even notice.
Everybody standing up. Okay, it is seven P M. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. The first.
I would like to be to apply for the United States of America into the republic of San. Foundation.
Welcome, welcome. I wanna thank some in this room for being beyond time here. Making sure we get going at a reasonable time. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the roll call.
Trusty Kathy.
Here.
Trusty Pop.
Here.
Trusty Aden.
There.
Trusty Turkey.
Here.
Trusty Door.
Present.
Trusty Bart. Here. Trusty Mike.
President. Our hearing that we have a forum and will continue. The next item is a motion to approve the agenda as presented. The reason being this is a little bit different than we normally do and uh just wanna look at it. There are no objections on.
Are we doing this?
There.
It's to allow.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm making a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
A second.
All right, I got a motion to second the questions concerns. If not, I'll call a question. All those in favor.
Alright.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, public comments for anything um typically it's anything that's not on the agenda, but I do know that we have some comments about something in the consent agenda. So I would like to hear those.
This will be your time. So I'm Tom on Govan. I own and operate the Ferdonian Mobile. Um, I've been there for twenty eight years. Uh, I take my responsibility as a liquor license holder very seriously. And I guess all I'm asking is that you consider that when you considered a new application for a class A license. Uh, there's been two classes in the village for fifty years. I delivered beer to Monahans in the seventies. You know, I don't have a lot to base this on, but a dollar store is a dollar store. Dollar General, a little different than a dollar store is a class A beer and liquor license necessary for you to decide. Thank you.
All right. There any other public comments? All right, hearing none, then we will go on to the consent agenda. There's any discussion regarding the minutes, the general fund or the liquor license now would be the time.
I would like to divide the question and separate the scene. From the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. I have a motion to divide those items. Is there any questions? I have a second as well. If not, then they'll vote on. All those in favor?
I.
I opposed. Motion carries. Alright. Right, so now the consent agenda is going to be, we've got two different motions looking that we're looking for here, one to approve minutes and the general fund and then the second one we'll call after.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from July six point sub or subsection A and I'll make a motion to approve subsection B of the general fund water and sewer and uses.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Any questions? If not.
What uh is the general fund water and sewer was or is that this, that's not regarding the raising water rates?
No, that's just what's uh.
Okay, alright. That's what I mean.
All right, any other comments? Not ready for a roll. I'll call it all those in favor.
Alright.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next, we have an approval of the liquor license application for Dollar General.
Get some background information on this, I guess, or what's the.
Yeah, so I can tell you what the process has been to date. Um, there's been nothing unusual. They um submitted an application about twenty days ago. Um, they waited the mandatory fifteen day waiting period before the board can take action. Uh Sergeant Lee did two check or inspections and found nothing of um concern. Uh, that memo is included in your packet. One of my advice.
That's that's what I'm curious.
Alright, are there any other comments or questions?
We have a village of approximately twenty two hundred people. And uh funding those who are not. But uh right now we have two of us right now that uh you can get. carry out some matter, not to mention the parents, you guys think about those too, but that's every nine hundred people had somebody that's trying to uh go and get their what they have. We have this with basically all three of us would be on the same line. Once I have locked the gentleman at work and once you guys too. And we have three in there and we have we're serving about seven hundred people. First going. I mean, I I think it's I think this would be tax year and all we are involved. I want the the story to be able to make work. And you have too many. They have two places and one block we all start and the closest we get from off. I'm not gonna say this is gonna put anybody out of the script. We have um the uh tax payer that's run it with some talent for um just twenty major. I was at the uh grand opening. I was only trying. Thank you. Wow, and uh invested in tearing down the building that was there, which is an old and putting up a brand new one was a McDonaldson. And went through a number of months of complaints and wondering why and this and that and the red roof and everything else, you know, how do I make people remember that? But he endured all of that and was successful in putting together uh a really nice store that very well and uh Casey has done the same thing on the other end. Maybe now is much trouble and whatever, but they uh they serve probably mostly the school or whatever. Uh, I just don't think that's I I don't think it's a good idea to have more than than two hours with their present population. There are big doors on the way to why you can't do two more places and that's where you can get carry out some.
So I I appreciate your comment. I really do. My my argument would be um again, not against it, just just in general, let's say something across fifty seven like a pick and save or something opened up or a Walmart one three. Would we be having the same discussion about something like that?
I don't know. I I wouldn't. I wouldn't think that I would do that.
Yeah, and I think you know. And I'm very sensitive this both ways, right? Because I I moved here because I wanted to be in a smaller town where um you know, I could feel comfortable raising my kids, knowing that there wasn't thirteen different bars, whatever, you know, different places for this, but I also see us um, you know, in a situation where this village is trying to grow a little bit, and I feel like for the last what I've been hearing for the last five, six years is we don't have a grocery store. We don't have these type of things. And then we get somebody that does wanna invest and do those type of things in our community and we welcome them, but we say, oh, just kidding, you can't do this or you can't do that. And I just, my only concern, I guess, would be is if if this is the route that we're gonna go, that we should probably watch the optics and how we present things, because I think that if we're not we're not open to ideas, we're not open to having um different businesses come forward, that maybe we would have um those businesses thinking twice about coming here. Bruce.
Yeah, my biggest uh concern is that usually when uh corporates comes in like uh Casey's or anything like that, they pump their corporate people in. And they say for two, three months or whatever, hire their local people here and stuff like that. My biggest concern is that if there is open liquor there and like in Fort Washington and Marshall, they will says probably that uh a lot of times they're not of age people to actually distribute or make that sale. So if this is gonna be approved or something like that, if they don't have anybody um on staff, I mean, establish yourself. Give us three months.
Could I respond to that, please?
Sure.
Um, so anyone selling alcohol at any of your stores need to be at least supervised by a licensed operator. That's a permitting process that happens within the village. Marshall Dave will does a background check on everyone that you permit. So they do have to go through a process. They each have a background check done. They have to be eighteen or older. Yeah, so they need to.
Kinda funny, you can sell it at eighteen, but you can't trick the twenty one.
That's true.
My question is, so I mean, I look at this from a liability standpoint, they've marked up everything that they're supposed to mark up. Where does this hold us liable if we say no, we don't.
Then that's my concern. I I'm not a lawyer or to be legal advice, I'm concerned about the illegal question and guys say, no. I deal with Dollar General that's likely to go come at us. Um, and I guess you can explore that if you want to. But they're gonna wanna know why you don't ask for a lot of them, right?
There's nothing wrong with that. Basically. I don't believe I, you know, to establish Casey went through some hard time. Uh, not anybody there, who's close. I mean, if they can occupy it and have somebody there uh that is qualified and licensed to sell that. And is it locked up when there's not anybody else there? A kid from high school, if buddy buddies might come in and say, hey dude, you know, you're selling. You know, you could do that, I guess. Um, I don't wanna sound negative, but I want to see it as that.
I don't want to put anyone in specs. I know Sergeant Lee did his due diligence here, but I would like to hear from Marshall. Just kind of your feedback, thoughts on kinda even kinda what Bruce is bringing up. I mean, any kind of advice you could provide us?
I I guess I I don't know for one, how many licenses the village has or is equal to have. Is there enough or less?
Class A is unlimited, so you, the board can decide.
I I understand um I don't call you as trust me, baby. Your concern about uh so many P in there, that's that's I think that's a doubt of it. And I think the one thing I've seen the smartest definition for the last eight weeks.
That's correct.
Any operators. It's only they can sell. Till it is.
That's correct.
Yes, that's that's kind of where the doubt um started, not. But then again, you know, either either Casey or not. It's 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 there. Somebody wants to bug them back or then it's not that. They do have cameras in there that cover the interior.
I. Why did that?
I mean, that's I think that's uh short sighted and stadium in terms of security, but I am sure they have a cookie gun or. That's what they can. Oh, I mean, there's just like everybody. I I I understand Doc's comments about having three of them in a one yard. Not there, there's difference there. I also can't be honest, I can't imagine Dollar Store being a big target for for their volume here. For you. I don't know how much the money goes at all. You gotta do it. It's it's important. And again, I'm not saying it's that here for a number of years, but since I don't need to get off on that, I was sort of without a government to support. I'm a little, I I don't, I guess they don't really think it's uh, so I don't really have an opinion. I feel like it's really my case straight. Uh, I have some concern regarding this, I think. Raised that. But uh, it's uh yes, we all have.
I mean, I understand completely there was a business here, but at the same time, I don't think it's up to us. We can't pick money. We can't pick that many. If they follow the the process and then I don't know if we can just pick here or there, like what they can have, they can't. I just think that's really tricky. That's a really slippery slope. Go down.
And that was kind of what my comment was about too. You know, I mean, there could be a billion different reasons why we don't like three or four of them being, you know, within hundred, two hundred yards of each other, but if they've gone through the the hoops that they.
I don't even think that's it for that's not it for me.
Well, that's fine. I'm just I'm just mentioning the fact that you know, that's one of the concerns and I don't know that we can just for lack of a better term, play God up here and say, yes, you can. No, you can't. Yes, you can. No, you can't. I don't think that's all that works if they've done everything that they've they're supposed to do legally.
My concern is that we we welcome this business into our community and I feel like we're kinda hacked. Uh, I don't know, like a better words, we're hacking them off by not allowing them to have this liquor license. I mean, we need this business here. And the thing is, is that I I think sometimes competition is good. Um, as far as the underage drinking, I I mean, you have to trust them that they're gonna do what they're supposed to. If they don't, then they get their license from court.
Yeah, I feel I feel like if we unite us at this point where it is reported, we're not. I'm sure I'm sure these sales were part of their business model. Who have they been the allies to move and decided to build here? So and it just seems like if so, then maybe the stuff's ahead of time. And also I'd like to know from anybody that wants why is what's specific about Dollar General that is so bad about getting a state where it's versus the other establishment, they're all right. What what characteristic of Dollar General make them trustworthy? And that's an honest question. Asking you, I'm asking anybody who wants to. I guess my first slide is Dollar. It's down which I mean, I don't think they're all that clear for the license. You can go and buy any of the stores, you can do that. So and they're out. And I keep on the mind too, I thought you have so many. We don't have. Anybody? Extra. People to.
I wouldn't say that. My biggest concern is uh the sale of it. Um, because uh I know people that have been in court that uh they don't have anybody in staff. They even sell it. So and that's personally, yeah, that. But uh there's really nothing strong like any kind of, they don't even have their license and how can we approve anything? I mean, he didn't even do the background check down. Never even gonna work there.
Was the way to sell on the front.
Right.
Even a couple of months. See what they got in and see if they get sales.
I think Tiffany wanted to say something.
I think and I I carried an operator's license for a long time and you go through training on it and you know, you always run the risk of a police officer, police force coming in and checking, making sure that you're selling properly and you're IDing properly and doing all of that. When you have your, when I had my operator's license, I took it very seriously. You can get in a lot of trouble. A lot of trouble. So as long as you're responsible to carry your operator's license, I think we have to put a little bit of faith into these people that are gonna get their operator's license to do the right thing and allow Dollar General to sell and have a good say.
Right. I think if this were to, if this was on the other side, it kind of like probably wouldn't have been a problem. Tell you.
But would it be the same way for Don if we had another restaurant open right next to Ferdonian family restaurant that wanted to sell?
Yeah, would be.
Sell booze. You know, but if they're right next to the other restaurant I found and they both wanna sell booze.
This has. You know. I don't know. That's what. And it's right on fifty.
I think, well, I mean, I think.
Poor.
Trusty Bart brings up a good point. That's what we're trying to say. You just can't. If they go through the process, they've legally gone through it. They've done what they needed to do. We can't sit here and decide this can stay and that can't. You just can't. I just don't think that's fair.
Well, I do wanna thank everybody for their comments and their opinions and and everything and really thinking about this, because these are important matters, right? This isn't just the minutes approving the minutes and doing this and that. This is something that affects the community as a whole. I I get that and people that are traveling through the community. So I do appreciate the discussion. Um, and if we are ready, I think now would be a good time.
We don't have a motion.
Correct.
That's right. Sorry.
Second.
We're not.
Still second. Second. Alright. Done.
Sorry.
Yeah, you're good.
I didn't mean to anticipate.
You're good. Alright, um, I have a motion to second then. I'll call the question. All those in favor?
I.
I opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
They'll be watching and I can tell you that.
Well, we'll we'll be watching then as much as we watch Tom or Casey.
Yeah, right, absolutely.
They they send a kid into your place.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate your business.
Yeah, absolutely. These are the things that we're trying. You too. Alright, we'll move on. Uh, next, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a presentation by Baker Tilly for the twenty twenty two audits.
Alright, well, good evening, everyone. I am Wendy Younger, partner with Baker Tilly, uh responsible for uh performing the audit for the village. Um, you should have in front of you your audited financial statements, but you should have in your packet a couple page handout that has the village logo on the the front of it and that um is in your electronic packet. So uh just so you know that I'm going to, I I met. Let me take a step back. Not with management. A few weeks ago, we went through uh the financial statement drafts and in great detail. Gonna keep it at a relatively high level tonight. We'll do my best to answer any questions that any of you may have um as I go through uh the presentation. Uh, so the first page of the handout um highlights the objective of the audit, which was to issue an opinion on the financial statements for the village. Included in your audited statements is our audit opinion. It's a clean, unmodified opinion. Um, that's the same type of opinion that you've received in the past and is the highest level of assurance that you can obtain from us as your auditors. Uh, do just wanna mention that if you're an individual that likes to compare year year over year uh the opinion for twenty twenty two include an additional paragraph, an emphasis of matters paragraph that highlights the implementation of a new standard, which was Gatsby or governmental accounting standards eighty seven. We've talked about this in the past several years for those that have been around. Um, that was the lease standard and required some additional accounting related to that, first evaluating the various leases that you have, which are your um tower leases and then uh accounting for them a little bit different than what they've been um accounted for in the past. So I just wanted to highlight that um for your information. Uh, on the next page of the handout, this is uh some very high level financial information and I don't see any of you with a handout, so I apologize for that. But on the the second page of the handout, um I've got some very high level financial information that highlights the various governmental uh funds of the village, gonna go through those a again at a relatively high level. The first column on there is the village's general fund and I will highlight that included in your audited statements. I believe it's on page forty two. Uh, there is a budget to actual comparison. Um, when you look at the budget to actual comparison for the village, um when you look at what you had anticipated happening at the time of budget, you had anticipated using roughly seventy five thousand dollars of fund balance. Ultimately, during the year, you ended very close to that, but you used a little bit more than you had anticipated uh anticipated roughly eighty six thousand uh dollars of fund balance. Um, couple of reasons for that. Uh, revenues came in roughly thirty thousand dollars less than budget. Couple different reasons for that. There was some um ARPA money and uh local road improvement grants uh funding that came in less than expected. Um, you also had building permit revenue that was down under budget by roughly ten thousand dollars. Um, so those were the largest contributing factors to being under budget in those areas. Um, expenses though also came in under budget by roughly eighteen thousand dollars. Um, you do budget uh some reserve funds, so that was roughly a hundred and nine thousand dollars that actually there is no actual number for it. It's really the building of a a surplus, so that uh factors into being under budget. Uh, Public Works was over budget by a hundred thousand dollars uh for twenty twenty two. A cup. Okay. Sorry. Um. But again, there there the reasons for that, part of that reason is you did buy a a truck. So that was money that you didn't budget for, but you ultimately used ARPA money for. Um, that was forty four thousand. Uh, refuse costs are over budget by roughly eleven thousand dollars and then street maintenance was over budget by twenty four thousand. So when you look at, although you were under by the reserves, you were uh over in DPW. Um, you were also under uh you budget for economic development. You came in roughly twenty two thousand dollars under budget uh for that also. So again, overall, the general fund used eighty six thousand dollars of fund balance compared to a seventy five thousand dollar budgeted use. Ended the year at three hundred and ten thousand dollars of fund balance. Um, three pieces to that. A small portion is non-spendable. That's a receivable that is recorded on the books. It's more long term in nature. You don't have the cash. We pull that out. You also have some restricted funds that are in your general fund. Those are your impact fee funds. Um, so those can only be used for the purpose for which those impact fees were developed. So again, we pull that money out. Uh, the remaining balance of the three hundred and ten thousand after we pull those out is two hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars. That represents roughly twenty three percent of your operating budget, so a very solid position. We usually look for that to be somewhere between ten and twenty five percent. Making sure you have enough money on hand if something catastrophic or unexpected would happen and you're you're at the high end of that range. So again, very positive. The one other item I will note, which is not included in the data that I uh included on the summary. Um, you do still have some unspent ARPA money, so you have roughly a hundred and ninety two thousand dollars of that. That number is not in fund balance yet. So um that sits on your balance sheet until you spend it, then you recognize the revenue. So it's essentially a wash, but I did just wanna mention that. Uh, the next column I presented is your fire and ambulance fund. Uh, you budget to break even in that fund. Actually, for twenty twenty two, you added roughly fifty six thousand dollars to fund balance, ended the year at a hundred and sixty thousand. All of that positive variance is from um uh ambulance fees way in excess of budget. Um, so whether that's good or bad, I'll let you interpret that. But again, revenue came in much higher than expected uh from ambulance services. Um, your capital project funds is the next column I've presented, a hundred and forty one thousand of revenue. That's all in the form of taxes. You spent uh roughly three hundred and thirty two thousand of on various projects, mainly in the road projects, but you also have your pumper truck that flows through there as a principal and interest payment. Um, so overall, that fund actually had a decrease in fund balance of a hundred and seventy eight thousand and ended the year at seventy two thousand um deficit uh as of the end of twenty twenty two. Of the next column, debt service, two hundred and fifty eight thousand of revenue. You pay principal and interest on village debt. This is not water and sewer debt. Um, so essentially a break even, you added a couple thousand dollars to fund balance. Those monies are restricted. They can be used to offset future uh levy or prepaid debt. uh, levy or prepaid debt. Uh, but again, that is a little bit of fun balance in that fund. The last governmental fund that you have that are exclusive of your water and sewer is your TID, your TID three. Um, essentially no revenue from the standpoint of actual increment or anything like that. You did spend a hundred and forty five thousand dollars during the year. Um, there's a little bit of interest expense in there, roughly twenty eight thousand. The remaining portion of those expenses are road projects, the various projects that went on within the TID. Um, you also had some lot sales during the year, a hundred and fifteen thousand. So overall, the TID did use a little bit of fund balance, twenty nine thousand and ended the year at two hundred and four thousand. All that two hundred and four is restricted, um, TID activity is restricted until the TID is ultimately closed. On the next page of the, the financial, uh, highlights, I did include information on the water and sewer utilities. Again, there are, uh, schedules in your booklets. Um, sorry, I don't have the page numbers written down on that, but um, just again, to hit some of the high points, uh, the water utility had a decrease in that position, uh, for twenty twenty two of roughly forty four thousand dollars. That compares to a positive addition to net position last year. Uh, in twenty twenty one, that, uh, addition to net position was, uh, eighty seven thousand dollars, so roughly a hundred and twenty dot, a thousand dollars swing. Um, when we look at the water utility, revenue has been very flat. Um, there, uh, there's no increase or, or significant fluctuation. However, your expenses within the water utility went up about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, uh, during twenty twenty two. Now, some of that is a byproduct of just inflation and the additional costs. Uh, but there were various areas, um, chemical costs were up eight thousand, um, outside services were up sixty thousand. Main repairs was up sixty thousand dollars. Um, wages were up eleven thousand dollars. So again, those various components contribute to those additional expenses. Um, ultimately, um, you ended the year at two point eight million of net position, very large number, not a fund balance. Uh, similar, uh, calculation. That includes all your infrastructure. So keep that in mind. That includes your, your mains and your towers and everything that goes along with the operation of the utility, less any related debt. Um, the utility did end the year at four hundred and seventy thousand dollars of cash. So it did have a positive cash situation. It did use a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of cash during twenty two, uh, mainly in the area of capital outlay. Um, so as we talked when I did, uh, went through the draft information, highly encourage you to take a look at doing a simplified rate, uh, case, uh, very simple process, actually putting some data in um, and considering a rate increase. It really does help to monitor that activity, uh, year to year versus all of a sudden needing, being forced to do a full rate study and ultimately having rates that your, uh, uh, citizens will not, uh, appreciate. So, um, highly encourage you to take a look at that. I believe it's on your agendas. Well, maybe you're already, um, uh, looking at that, but I just wanted to mention that because we did have a discussion on that. Um, the sewer utility is the last fund of the village. Um, had a small decrease in that position last year of sixteen thousand. Uh, I'm sorry, in twenty two of sixteen thousand dollars, it also had a small, um, decrease in that position in twenty, uh, one of thirty five or thirty seven thousand. Revenue in the sewer utility was actually down roughly thirty five thousand and there was no, um, customer class that stuck out as being a significant decrease. It was within all of the, the customer categories. Um, so, uh, uh, again, saw a decrease there. Um, expenses went up a little bit, uh, by roughly twenty thousand. So not as significant as water, uh, mainly in equipment maintenance, um, area within the sewer. Um, sewer ended the year at one point one million of cash. Um, keep in mind that there's, uh, roughly half of that is your equipment replacement fund. So that is monies that's required to be set aside by the DNR. So those are not money you have for operations. So roughly a half a million dollars of cash in the sewer utility. You did see a nice increase in cash for twenty two, uh, by a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. So uh, very positive cash flow in, uh, the sewer utility. Uh, switching gears very, uh, quickly, in addition to the audited statements, we also issue a reporting and insights document. I don't know if you've been provided that. Uh, but that is our, really our document that we communicate to, um, you, uh, any comments or recommendations. We are required to communicate any material weaknesses that exist, uh, within the village's internal control structure. Um, included in that document, uh, we continue to have, um, the segregation of duties comment. Um, essentially having, uh, one or two people doing, um, the accounting work, uh, from a segregation standpoint is not ideal. Um, however, um, I think now with, uh, some, uh, increase in staffing, perhaps there's some, uh, uh, time, it would be a good time to take a look and, and reshuffle some of that and see if some additional segregation could be obtained. Um, we also have a material weakness regarding the fact that we prepare the audited statements as your auditors. Um, so we become part of your internal control for a brief period of time. We also do material journal entries as part of the audit process. So all of that accumulated together, uh, does result in a material weakness. These are not new to the village. They are also not unique to government. Um, really have to take a look at cost benefit of eliminating those, um, on a go forward basis. Um, the last point I will just make about that other document, um, I mentioned when I began, there was a new governmental accounting standard eighty seven for the village for twenty two. There will be another one, uh, for the village for, uh, twenty three, which is Gatsby ninety six. And it is the accounting for subscription based IT arrangements. Um, again, a very exciting topic, uh, but again, it, it is very similar to implementation to Gatsby eighty seven will require inventorying. Um, things to think about is, you know, leasing space in, uh, the cloud. Um, GIS system sometimes have subscriptions, data system sometimes have subscriptions and it's anything within. There are subscriptions that are over a year in length. So that's also, uh, something to keep in mind. So we'll work with management to make sure the village is appropriately, appropriately implementing as of the end of the year. Um, on the handout, uh, I have included my email, my direct line, happy to talk with any of you in more detail. Um, but I'd also be happy to, uh, answer any questions you may have currently. I get, I can go, I can go, I can go forever.
This is the first time you've ever done.
Is there a what?
Yeah.
No, sky's kind of cloudy.
Are there any questions, Wendy?
The federal government just had a huge breakdown of their information in the town. Um, I was wondering if, if you still consider it probably safe enough to store municipal.
I'm sorry, that is out of my wheelhouse. I, I have no idea about IT security. I'll be real honest.
The, uh, drop in, uh, revenues from, there were, you said we were down like forty?
Thirty five thousand.
Thirty five thousand and then also we had, uh, another twenty five thousand. You said that where we were lighting or something or so.
Are we just talking short? Yes. So your revenues from customers was down roughly thirty five thousand. You had an increase in expense. So revenue was down, expenses up by twenty thousand, uh, again, for equipment, many maintenance and that type of thing. So overall, um, you saw roughly a fifty five thousand dollar change over the previous year in those categories.
And the ARPA funds, are they all, uh, calculated within?
They are not in any of the numbers in here. They are in your audited statements, but they come through as part of your balance sheet. So if you look at the balance sheet in there, um, for the general fund, you'll see a, uh, it's labeled as unearned revenue and it's, I believe, a hundred and ninety four thousand something, some couple dollars and it will sit there until you spend it. And then when you spend it, it'll flow through into revenue. Well, you have till twenty, the end of twenty twenty four to commit those funds or obligate them to enter into contract. So you, you have a little bit of time, but
You said what? Twenty six?
Twenty four. Did I say, I would say no, twenty four. End of twenty four. You have, yes, you had, they have to either be spent by the end of twenty four or legally obligated. So a contract has to be entered into. So.
I believe Administrator Jenkins has.
Yeah, I remember that number that you had was from my year. Um, and I shared when the remaining dollars that are unspent right now, I do lost revenue, she's aware of that. Um, so the federal government's eyes, you thought of either those dollars, right? And so those will then be the reserves and then your larger groupers, right? Uh, so I want to touch on that. I want to touch on the in-laws fees. So we should be mentioning that. Right? And that's when, that's the last of the wires in the federal fund to, to fund for the balance. And if I found my one, it's secondary, a few weeks' comments. Um, obviously we got, you know, three people in that office, say, we said, listen up. Um, so we're working on those, uh, items and then we'll continue to be with us next week.
Did you say all the ARPA funds?
Committed meaning that we're playing the lost revenue.
Okay, but we don't have a hundred and some thousand dollars to spend. I know, we've already.
Unspent calls.
Yeah.
Uh, you'd be hundred days, uh, delegated for the slashback and then after that's forty eight thousand, yes.
So then you have another forty eight or so left?
Right, that's right.
When you used ARPA funds during twenty two to, for the, the highway truck. So that was forty four.
That's referring to the paper.
Well, you originally got two hundred and thirty five, but some of it's.
Yeah, there you go, Dan.
All right. Any other questions, Wendy?
All right. Well, thank you.
Okay, we will move on. Uh, next we have reports on village committees and we have the Parks Interact Committee, Trustee Barts.
There was a lot set up today going on. There's going to be more tomorrow and we will be ready to rock and roll on Saturday. Administrator Jenkins is really taking the lead. Appreciate all the help on that. Um, as well as our PPW department for all your guys' time and effort putting into it. So we appreciate that. Mud run on Saturdays. So everybody's coming to volunteer, correct?
I got a reunion actually. Um, I've been well asked.
Questions?
You know, I, I know that, um, the mud run uh, had, uh, taken on quite a few offers with our DPW guys. I was down there. They were all working on stuff like that. I know the, you know, like for weeks doing all of that. So the P and L would be really nice for me to look at. And then to kind of weigh what next year's event would be. I'm happy for it. I just don't want to make, I want to make sure our citizens' money aren't spent with our DPW guys, uh, doing an event. What, maybe we need to go volunteers? You know, maybe they can, from now on, drag the high beams out there and then wet it down or whatever they do. The legitimate, right?
Would be a lot culture on our end. And it's a benefit of doing that.
Yeah, and I, I think it's great. I just want to make sure our guys out in the fields are getting their stuff done.
I think that's a good concern. I mean, we don't want to distract them from normal, but I mean, and I certainly don't discourage something like this. It's good for the village and camaraderie and whatever, but I, I see what Bruce's concerns are, that you're distracted from their normal duties. Think, uh, Mr. Paul has it all under control. I'm sure he's able to control that to make sure that they're doing their duties and this at the same time is. So any other questions of Trustee Barts regarding the Parks and Rec Committee job?
I, I hope it's great.
As they answered that, I am going to provide a summary document for you guys once everything's all said and done and we add up all the numbers. Um, and then I'll, and then I'll just add, you know, to your point about staff. Um, and these guys know, I, I expect a lot out of them. I expect everybody to go above and beyond regardless of whether it's a community event or a public works issue or something in-house with our finances. So, yep, I, I agree. It's a lot of efforts, a team effort too, and I thank you guys for being a part.
One last thing, um, uh, EMS or I'm sure the priority department is going to be down there. What do you got, Mike, for down? Sorry, it'll be long.
Cool. All right. Thank you, Trustee Barts. Uh, next we will move on to the planning commission. So we had held a planning commission, uh, meeting on the tenth of July. And the purpose of that was a couple of public hearings and some approvals of some CSMs, um, which we'll be discussing a little bit later tonight, mainly on Martin Drive and then also, uh, the one in Business Park. And then the zoning request change that was for property on Fredonia. Any questions? Right, if not, I will move on to report on operations of the village. Um, I don't have anything in particular to present on, but again, I just wanted to echo the sentiments of a lot of these trustees up here. We really appreciate the DPW and all the work that they've done. Uh, has been a lot coming up, you know, for the, for the mud run. Looking forward to the race on Saturday. And I do hope that anybody that is interested in volunteering, uh, is able to make it down there and at least help out a little bit if you get a chance. If not, that's cool too, but it'll be a fun event and I'm looking forward to it. With that, we'll, uh, move on to the village administrator.
All right, I'll just give you some highlights from my report here. Uh, I've been having a lot of conversations with Ellers. Ellers is your financial advisor in regards to, uh, possible debt restructuring, um, the new CIP stuff that we have going on and then projects within the TID. Um, our strategic planning group continues to meet. Uh, we're winding down with that. The results will be presented, uh, one of our August meetings. If you haven't already seen, there's a public survey that is continuing to go out till the end of the month. So please take advantage of that if you haven't already taken that survey. Um, I'll again echo about the mud run. Huge thank you to staff and I, and I really just want to highlight a specific staff member, no offense, Derek or Rick. Uh, our, our DPW crew has been doing a lot of stuff with that. Uh, he's really been excited about it. Uh, it's just awesome to see, um, that, you know, positivity from him and then the rest of staff. Um, the, uh, private water testing lab is officially up and running. Um, your GPW director could share a little bit more about that, but it is officially up. So please, please start spreading the word. We can take on pretty much anybody as a client. We're happy to do it and then that equals more revenue for the village. Um, some items to follow up on from the last meeting, the attorney and I are working on the ARC board language that you had asked about. It does sound like it's going to be a little cleaner than I thought, which will be great. So as soon as I get that opinion back from him, I'll bring that forward to you guys. Um, I also talked to them about your food truck, truck. So as your ordinance is currently written, a food truck is a transient merchant. So we did follow the correct procedure um, this year, uh, but that doesn't mean it's maybe the, the right one for us, right? Um, so the attorney is exploring, uh, other ways to do that to probably end up being a conditional use permit tied to, uh, a property. And then, uh, finally Dollar General officially opened. I'm sure you guys have all been in there. Uh, we're really excited to have them, um, in the community. And I'll switch over quick to my financial summary here. The only things of note is that if you look at June's item under payroll contractors and expenses, you'll see there's an uptick there that is for, we had some of our insurance payments. Uh, some of those invoices came in. So that's just a higher uptick than normal. And then on the other fund expenses under paramedic fund, you'll see that we started paying some larger ticket items. That is the vehicle and then other supplies that the paramedic group has, um, has purchased as their first expenses. And then we've applied for reimbursement from the county on that. So I think that's it. The rest of the items will be talked about the rest of the agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions. Beyond what I already said? I already talked about that. Sorry, did you miss it? Oh, sorry. It's fine. I was saying that the, um, attorney thinks that changing that ordinance would be a little bit cleaner than I had thought. Um, so he's drafting what their ordinance would look like. So it would just be changing one part of your ordinance, which would then blanket change everything else. Uh, but the summary is that those duties that the ARC board have would move to the plan condition.
I don't like that at all. I, I, you know, unless, uh, we have, uh, some of those other guys on that, that are on our board that are first, well versed in this kind of stuff. I mean, it, the ARC board deals with different pitches of.
Color of siding.
I just asked a question. You can debate that when it comes in front of us. I just asked a simple question.
I just asked a simple question.
Oh.
Right. Any other questions of the administrator?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we were talking about the the water testing. Are we doing any kind of marketing aside from just word of mouth in the village and to other communities that we can do all of this water testing? Is there kind of a plan of what we wanna do for that?
Yep, so we did do at least one or two social media posts already. I believe we done it, we've done an email blast, right, Doug Johnson? Yep. Um, and then I am personally challenging your DPW director to make those cold calls and visit some communities. And he's already starting to do that. So, uh, yeah, we're pretty, we're pretty optimistic. I mean, this is a big deal for Northern Ozaki County for us to be really the only name in the game. And we'll take advantage of that as much as we can, so.
Um, I wish I had to be able to do a testing and work for rural wells. We can, okay.
Yeah. So that's another point is that I did share with the town side about this as an opportunity and they're gonna add a little bird in their newsletter too.
And from from a realtor standpoint, if I may, it might not be a bad idea to advertise that to um different realtor organizations as well. Because they always have to get their, you know, their wells tested whenever somebody moves. So um that'd be a good opportunity to capture some revenue there. And typically, I don't know what the turnaround time would be, but something tells me it might be a little bit quicker. For us possibly. I'm just saying, some of those companies take like a really long time. So anyway. All right, moving on, uh, the report from the village marshal.
Yeah, my monthly report. In addition to that, we now, the next time we meet, we get done at the Ozaki County, the night out. It's an office source. Um, we don't have to. And then uh we are, we are set for the fire department. Uh, citizens from Sheraton.
Excellent. Any questions to the marshal?
Sure. Um, trailer, I had a neighbor come over and complain about the period of work there for a couple of weeks. I know that Marshall is talking there. You guys called me, thought it was me, my trailer or out there. Um, that made the move.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it as always.
Thank you.
All righty. Um, next we have the Fire Chief. Uh, I don't know if anybody wants to take this, but the report is in your packet. If there's any questions, let me discuss it on that.
Just excited that we've got to paramedic. Really exciting news.
Your question, Bruce?
Well, I I did, but I don't wanna get nailed with the point of order, but um. The uh, what the association did, they were here and uh it wasn't the association, but Knutson went in here and got ten grand. And we do that every year.
This is for the lots of stuff that you and I were talking about earlier?
So, and then uh the village also paid another six grand uh with the help of the uh Lions Club to cover the rest of the fire. But then they go ahead and then meet their uh budget goal for this hundredth anniversary. And they give free admission, correct? That's what I understand. Um, I'm just further down the line here. Uh, we're looking at eight percent and something else. As a, what about, why wouldn't they collect that money and put it back into their fund for the EMS? Guys are down there asking for money all the time. Why would they shut it off like that? I think there's a lot of money that could have been made there to go back in to support that program. I maybe I'm wrong. I don't know.
First, maybe you.
Just raise taxes again.
Did you, were you sitting at those original meetings when they had started talking about doing the hundredth anniversary? I don't remember if you were.
Yeah.
When we're down at the fair, right?
Yeah.
They were talking about their their sole goal for the anniversary party was just to cover their costs. They didn't wanna make money. They didn't wanna do anything. It was just solely to cover their cost for what they were putting on to the.
It costs us six thousand dollars.
Yeah, that was something that we had agreed.
Well, again, but it's still money that we have to keep track of.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I agree. I mean, I think these are once in a lifetime, you know, generational time things. I mean, I I understand and I think your concerns might be better. You know, brought before that the Fire Chief, I know he's not here tonight, but um that or somebody on the hundredth anniversary committee. I don't know that we can really speak to that so much.
Right?
Yeah, why not? Anything else? All right, we're gonna move on to the Public Works wastewater treatment plant. Director.
Ready for questions?
I'll start with your path of the report in the packet. Anything that you wanna highlight?
That's awesome.
She did that last week, sir.
Is the well in there?
Well, you'll talk about that later. Yeah.
So with with all the work on the. Mud run, you know, the resources that have been asked. What was Latin? What was it that they done? Oh, I know. So everything that normally gets done, you've done it up?
Yes.
Hasn't been a lot of graphic.
That's amazing. That is amazing.
With the exception of you guys that wanted to do earlier, they. I deny. But, but. But everyone worked out, got everything completed today. Uh, guys are going to come in on Saturday morning and make sure nothing bad happens. Have everything set up. Ready to move. I'm gonna take a quick look at. What I saw. We're gonna leave something on the Saturday morning.
No changes.
Okay, any, anything else for the?
Uh, state of, uh, need to move next week. We are gonna go over, but it's now we're having a surprise with the communication. It will be the best, perfect timing and we'll all tie it in, which we want to pay extra. When the ballot gets updated and fixed, that will all have to be tied into the state of which they'll be here.
So kind of a blessing in disguise.
It's working out just right.
That's good to hear for once.
Yes.
The uh well casing itself, remember when we talked about that powder coating? Because I did a lot of research that surged on that uh powder coating for that well casing. And it was. Powder coating uh can add like ten to fifteen years to your. To that field. Is that something that you were interested in or not?
Um, well, when I got that phone, municipal well was not enough to break out. Due to uh the configuration of the pipe. So.
So maybe this is a good opportunity for you. We're we're gonna discuss this later.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I'll maybe just add Eric's point that the clarifier work is going on right now. Um, we did receive the first of the two insurance checks. We'll receive another after we submit the invoice. Um, so it looks like they're actually gonna cover it like we talked about, which is great news for the. Yeah, well deductible plus another seventy thousand, but it's not a hundred and forty thousand.
Yeah, right. Getting fixed for half price.
All right. Any other questions about the or from the DPW director regarding stuff that's not further on the agenda? Okay. All right, next we have uh the village clerk.
Um, I don't have much to add except to say that um Melissa and I have spent the week learning, learning, learning. Um, and it's been great. And I think I'm a little pride, um, but I come, I come back to work on Monday. Um, with more knowledge under my belts than I have last Monday. Oh, my gosh, well, I just took a class about alcohol and stuff like that. Really appropriate.
Able to speak to those concerns. She also was given wrong information and called me in a panic and.
Yeah.
And we figured it out. We were.
One of the interesting things I found is that um as we move from class to class, we get um different guidance from different. Data sources. Um, so I think um one of the things that I've learned is that I have to adapt to my instinct and my six years of previous experience in Massachusetts. And try to make our best guess about the appropriate response. Um.
Yeah.
And figure out for best resource to bear.
You should, you should not be, you should not be surprised at all.
So, but it's been great. I I grateful for the opportunity to be able to attend. What do you think has been the most beneficial so far?
Um, I think so. I feel like the best part about things like this is the opportunity to network with peers. Um, so I feel like, you know, I've met some people. It's tough because it's remote. Um, but I've met some clerks. I I asked them when to be my mentor, so hopefully she will, you know, uh, mentor me. I had a great mentor in Massachusetts and I'm hoping to find that kind of relationship here. So networking, I would say.
Any other questions of the clerk? We appreciate you going. No, just, that's not, that's later too. Everyone stop asking about your water. I know you are. All right, we'll move on to. We'll move on to the treasurer's report. Thanks for doing the money.
There were piles of it, piles of it, Melissa, were you on Monday?
Two was in triangle, I think it was two and a half days in the office. Because I had to take the departments to the cables, to the cable. And then that's the theory stuff. It will vanish at home. And two of my cares, but. So the first two and a half minutes to here. But all the interruptions and trying to be really listening.
So what was your favorite class or thing that you learned? Yeah.
No, it's good.
I did have a budgeting class too. My classes to the individuals, I'm glad we're done. And watching class and my defense class.
Well, that, and you picked the right days to come to the offer. Well, I appreciate both of you doing the classes, furthering your knowledge in your respective positions. And looking forward to what that brings you in the future. So thank you. Hey, you pay the bills. Any other questions? We'll move on to the Ozaki County District Two Supervisor.
Well, I sure got a lot of phone calls and text messages.
Sorry.
Over the last.
I bet.
Few weeks, so, uh, which is good. We have people paying attention, but um I'll try and be as brief as I can without getting too much into the weeds here. But um, kind of how we've got to the point where we've got, I'll start in April of twenty twenty one. The county approved five million dollars being used for EMS services. Since that time, um, there were a lot of hoops to jump through, a lot of red tape to go through, and it was confusing. It bring a lot of information and it's been, it's been a pain in the neck, to be honest, on both sides. Um, I'm fortunate enough to see it on this side and I'm fortunate enough to see it on the other side. It's been a pain on both ends here, so. Um, so since then, those funds have been starting to use for other things. Um, so now one of the things is that the, uh, where I get there. So like one of the things is we use a little over a million dollars for some nonprofits that came out of there. But however, we still have like five point three million dollars that are in our funds that are unallocated that we could use. So there was a proposal made by the Finance Committee of the County and on Wednesday, there was no hold taken, which is a presentation. But it severely cuts the amount that the county had promised to give EMS funding. And and it basically ended up being two point three million dollars going directly to a one-time check being spent, which we don't even would have got three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's all we would have got. That's not enough since we proposed eight hundred and seventy eight thousand for three years, I believe. So no fear, like I said, I got a lot of text messages, I got a lot of phone calls, got a lot of emails. So um, I'm uh, we're on it. So this was just a presentation, just proposal, it's not gonna be finalized. So uh, presentation will get on Wednesday. This will come to Public Safety Committee, which I'm on, and Public Safety will discuss. And we will put our recommendation forward. And then once we get a committee, it will go back to the county board. We get approved on, so this is a long ways from being over, but kind of just to give everyone a timeline and what this is gonna look like. So now that it left, the county board was presented, which is something we do. I don't know, is that kind of letting them notice what's going on? It goes to the, to the Public Safety, which will have a meeting in August fifteenth. We'll make an approval from there and then I'll probably be, assuming it's gonna be on the first agenda in September to vote on. So um, I personally think we need to put it, we even promised five million dollars. That's what it has to be. So um, my proposal right now, cause we do have to make, cause uh, the sheriff is also looking to have, uh, they need to build a, are looking to build a eight million dollar dispatch center. Because we're having trouble keeping dispatch and now Cedarburg is the last community that still has a dispatch center. And one of their talks that hasn't been finalized that they're gonna move everything to the county. So we're gonna have all dispatch under one roof. So the, right now, what I'm thinking is we're going to do a seven hundred thousand dollar check between state municipalities, which is four point two million dollars. Which leaves another eight hundred thousand for the sheriff to receive for the game dispatch center. Build that, I think everyone, it's a win-win for everybody. So we'll see where it goes in committee, but that's kind of what I'm gonna be proposing moving forward. So um, there is a lot of excitement going on right now. And like I said, I am hopeful we'll get to the end of this and everyone will survive. But to be honest, this is probably the ARPA funds I wish we would have never got because it has just been a pain in the night trying to figure out what's going where. So, but I do believe EMS, that is a must first and foremost, absolutely without doubt. If we're gonna do this program correctly and we want it to succeed, we have to get this off the ground correctly. And if we don't, it's going to be catastrophic for for this county. So again, I tried to make a pitch of not only are we elected leaders, each, each colleague that I serve with there to represent their community. We have to think about Ozaki County as a whole. So if the Southland County wants to take all the money, the Northland doesn't get any, they're gonna have to spend the research stuff here. And that's not gonna be effective either. That's not gonna be sustainable. So um, so I'm really pushing to kind of think long term and let's do what we promised. We said we're gonna do and let's get these communities in mind if they need to get this done. So I will, like I said, if anyone's interested, it's usually, uh, like I said, it'll be August fifteenth. It's usually eight fifteen in the morning at the uh Justice Center on the lower level. We meet there, tomorrow the walk will go to end and we'll discuss and see what we come up with out of committee and see if we get it approved at the board level.
As it gets a little bit closer, would you mind reminding us about that again? Um, I think that'd be to those that can make it. I know it's kind of a tough time right in the middle of the week, but I think that that would be something that would be really good to kind of show a united front um and say, hey, we kind of need this help up here. You know, we've been focusing on this for a few years and and really trying to get it going now, so.
There's just so much going on between, there's just a bunch, I think we're all talking the right thing, but I think everyone's talking past each other and not really listening and on the same page. Right, there's even some misconceptions about shared revenue and where that's going. And that should be extra funds, but like Cedarburg was there and they're like, well, we will cut two thirds of ours already committed to something else. And a third committee EMS, it's just, it's a mess. So we're sorting it out. It's hard for twenty six people, but we will get through it, I have no doubt. So, but I'm glad I received the concerns, the emails, the phone calls, text messages. But like I said, this is far from over yet, so we'll do, we'll do the right thing. We'll get something, we'll get it accomplished. Where's this dispatch center being built? Uh, it's gonna be important.
Important.
Is it a building that they're building? Pardon me? It's a totally building they're building.
It's a totally building they're building.
I think building under the Justice Center.
They're building on that first story. Which I oppose. If anyone's. Yes, they are.
Why did you oppose that?
I oppose that because uh, the problem I had is because when they initially had a bid. A few years ago, prior to COVID, it was obviously quite substantially less than what the initial bid came out. And it seemed to be whatever they were doing was working. So at the time. When we approved this last year. Yeah, interest rates and inflation was still climbing. And I wanted to say, hey, we don't need it right to second. I would put hit pause button here. Let's see how another year goes. Not saying that prices are going to decline, but. Maybe they'll kind of flat toll because we don't know what we're dealing with. And. I uh, like I said, I lost that hole, which is fine. We move forward with it. And I, it's not a, it's not a bad thing. I was just more concerned about costs overall trying to have a growth.
Maybe save some money.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's the only reason I shot it out of time is because I was worried about concern about budgeting and wherever it's going to end up financially overall.
Uh, just two things. First, I want to thank Trustee Haas. He answered. We had a little bit of a back and forth with feedback, eleven o'clock. Text message uh, stream on Wednesday night. So our Tuesday nights, I appreciate that. I gave him all that feedback and I know he'll use that at the county level. And I just wanted to share that uh, the village did file our. Q two report that matches, matched the MOU. Uh, we filed that on time, obviously asking for reimbursement of funds that I talked about earlier uh, tonight. Uh, only to today get a new form from Mitch at the county that now is getting asked to get filled out. So I'm sure if your fire chief was here, he would probably be a little bit more angrier than I am. But it's that kind of stuff that, you know, it. It's just frustrating to deal with and.
Great.
I look forward to streetlining that.
To a degree, I share the same frustration. Honestly, I don't think honestly, there are a lot of people behind the scenes that aren't giving the credit. There's Brian's one of them. He's put it in a ton of time, a ton of work. He's very educated on this. We've talked at length on the phone a couple of times. Another person that anyone gets a chance is Chief Bill Rice. He's at Sawville and Graff as fire chief. He has done an amazing job. He's one of those that I feel. He could have said, no, I need, I need, I need. And he really understands that the North End of the County has to get up and going because that helps him and helps the rest of the country. So he's been a big advocate. For trying to get things done on the North End of the County. So if you ever see him, he's a really nice guy. He's, you know, he's a plethora of information when it comes to this too. He's done a lot of work behind the scenes. So. Please don't forget those. I said, I know I'm here, the one giving a report and voting and whatever. But those guys are doing the legwork behind the scenes. Make sure it gets there and we do it correctly. So if you ever do see them, they can't. You can't give them enough thanks for all the time they put into this.
Bruce?
Yeah, Josh, um, what I think we all need to understand is that that program cannot fail. I mean, we're not in a position right now to say, well, it's not going to work.
Right.
We do have some art stuff that you might want to look at uh, at local level here. I mean, but we. Our whole total goal, and we don't have any aspect of uh. Or uh. You know, what we're going to be revenues. I'm getting that more and revenues. If it'll uh, help out with that sustain, then we look at.
I will say Brian was forward thinking and I'm Chris knows that. And the Northern End of the County is the one that actually put a sustainability plan together. We have one. Put together, all of this is going to be after three years. Initially, after the three years of power is going to be paid for moving forward. So we have that agreement that we were.
And they didn't acknowledge that.
We're the first ones to do that, to actually come up.
We would pay it up. And, and you wonder why it, that nobody's completed their stuff yet. Well, every time you walk in there with a piece of paper with what they wanted. They hand you another piece of paper.
Again, I will say personally, everyone knows where I stand, but I will say personally, I think the amount of hoops that they had jumped through is absolutely ridiculous when we literally handed out over a million dollars to nonprofits like it was candy. That's all I'm going to say. We didn't make anyone else jump through the same amount of hoops that we made EMS. And, and these fire departments and municipalities jump through that we just kind of, it is over. So I think it's. Unfair. Right. I agree. Because I said it at the meeting, to be honest, when we approved the United Way thing, I told one of the super and they were asking why I was so upset about it. I said, when you call nine one one, I don't think United Way is going to show up to save your life. So.
That is a lot of money. I agree with you there. Um, but I also would say that uh, the lower income people within our county rely on. Non.
Oh, I agree. You got five million dollars they still unallocated. Why do you have to take it out of a EMS fund?
Understood.
I'm sorry. I.
Good point.
And they come up with a hundred thousand dollars. So that they can pay one person to, to a child. You know, that's.
It's always something because it's much easier to spend other people's money than yours, right?
People on that one that are not having a heart attack on the way up to a packer game because they go right through for them.
That's right. All right. Any other questions of the county supervisor?
No, Josh, thank you for your time and giving us reports on this and everything that you're doing.
Yeah, sure. Thanks. I'll continue. But like I said, I'll continue to inform everyone. But again, we meet first and third Wednesday of the month. First month, Wednesday of the month is usually we vote on things. Second Wednesday is usually informational, uh, just kind of what's going to be coming forward. So like I said, if you get a chance to show up, it's at nine AM. At the administration center. Otherwise, I said, I'll do my best to keep everyone informed, but please pay attention. If you see something, email, phone call, any kind of pressure. You can put on any supervisors is appreciated.
Alright. Okay, any other, anything else? Thanks, Josh. Appreciate it. We're going to move on now to the items for discussion and or action. Uh, the first thing. There you go. We're good? We're good? The first thing we have on the agenda is um, motion to approve registration and or travel expenses for the league. Chief Executive Workshop. Um, this is something that came through a while ago. Uh, basically, it's. I mean, if you look through, it's in your packet. It's something I would like to attend. It, it's something that I don't think that we're budgeted for. Um. But at the same time, I think it would be, right, I think it would be good for myself and um, for Chris. As well to keep improving, keep learning and um, being able to just keep moving forward in a leadership role. I will say, I, I don't know, um, Chris, you were talking about possibly the hotel, the fortune number. I'm. It's just an outper, like, I'm not going to do that because of some other obligations. It may be easier. Well, first of all, I'll, I'll start off by saying neither one of us is going on Wednesday. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and then so it'd be Thursday and Friday. Again, I'm, I don't think we're looking for. Mileage and all that stuff. I think. You know, I'm just seeking for the class. Maybe you for a hotel room for a night.
Or maybe we're sending both of you to the uh, executive. To the executive workshop. And to apply, we agreed upon um. Other costs that we uh, were so hard to come up with.
Someone said.
Yeah.
Sorry, John.
Alright. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
We're all across involved.
Uh, we have a table that pays so much, we only pay so much, this much, that much. So we don't have to hash it over every time something takes.
Which we're doing anyway.
So now, without going into detail, your employee handbook outlines mileage. Reimbursement for food, things like that. The fact that you guys think they're referencing, that's already kind of part of your employee handbook.
Right.
And so then in addition to, it's the registration fee. And then I'm asking to stay at that hotel just from Thursday to Friday because that makes my travel a little bit easier. Otherwise, I'll charge more mileage. So I guess, you know. Whatever you want to do.
And that's what he wanted to do too.
No, he's, he's not going to be staying at the hotel.
Okay.
He's welcome to join me. We can share, share a twin medal.
You know, I think I'm definitely have.
That's scary.
There you go.
No, absolutely not. No. If anybody knows this, I'm totally like with all media stuff. So, yeah. I think I asked, I asked Rick about Renan's Stimped and he's like, you gotta watch it. I'm like, okay. Anyway, okay. Um, so I've got a motion and a second. Yeah, motion and a second. Um, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, next we have a motion to approve addition of water and wastewater testing to the fee schedule. Again, this is due to the lab. Uh, that's, that's being uh, created and it will obviously increase revenues as we um. Are able to capture those contracts.
I'll make a motion to approve the wastewater uh, testing. Uh, fee schedule the way it is here.
I'll second that.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Awesome.
In your uh, memo, you mentioned that the prices are possibly changing. All of a sudden, when. Is. An annual review?
No, it's an as-is review.
So.
That is what it says in the fee schedule.
Hmm, maybe it was in the other thing.
So the reason. Like some of the water testing stuff, one is expensive. And. If I can do a bulk order at the beginning of the year. One, they'll give me a discount and then they usually throw the fresh shit in the front end instead of. Six hundred dollar order, maybe a quarter thousand. So. If I just base myself on when I need to refill it. Price per item expensive than I did before.
Joe, what?
Obviously, that would be um, all fast. Right. So it might get sort of cruel faster because that has to be in the long, twenty thirty best lead. Then it's worth the go and fall. Bottles are three years.
Okay.
The bottle's very few years. I think the agents. Like eighteen months, but. They're hefty and then they require me to do because the incident shall not be loose measure. So after. There is a lot. Something we have to do, but more we do better. Back to the original question is. Are we going to be okay with annual? Review of the process? Should it be semi? Now, I think semi-annual will be a little better only because. While the anticipated COVID. And look at that. And. Believe COVID or not. Um, I ordered some stuff for the lab beginning of March. I haven't got. And instead of that box being five dollars and eight by eight. Another minutes, I will reach out and say we can get some for custody, even we borrow some years though. I, I am reviewing the intention of that. And you know, next year, that was a very great example. This lab is its own pot, right? So your DBW firm would be channeling to make a. Balance of individually for, you will be planning a bucket of these, wanting to pad, make this by the pad, that's. Uh, that being said, we also need to be flexible for the cost and price to change and everything else. So that's kind of made by what you asked.
What kind of time does that occupy you with? The testing process? Is it gonna, it's going to pay for itself, correct? I mean, we've heard that.
So my. Goal is to. The lab itself with one. On itself, it'll be a little funny. So I would have to. Talk to the board or put in the budget and say, okay, I'm using four dollars a piece of glitter. That'd be something that would rather that's generated that that would sell fine. Uh, right now I have. A folder last minute here. There it is, more. That I have expressed issues, but yeah, I'm getting uh, results of. The B and R bottle that hasn't escaped again and they have.
That D and R.
I'll do stuff for three weeks now. So. But that's separate with the water. Basically, it's one, we have a water. And how much time do we commit to it? Uh, we do have an apprenticeship company today's week. And. Today's events are three days in the lab. If they're not that bad.
Yeah, she's killing it from what I understand.
Yeah.
There's a lot of other time to do.
So, yeah, she's a great physician. He goes to school here at the portal.
Yep.
Her father is a plumber in town. I mean, and he's spreading the word for his customers, because she brings. Her back and samples the last. I think it's all within all around.
Yep.
On the night they were. Trying to. Over to locations to. Public sectors.
Yeah. I don't want to get too far into the weeds. I want to kind of make sure we get back to the, the fee schedule here. So. I, I think that's a very valid concern. Um, I don't know. If we should try it on an annual basis to see kind of what happens and, you know.
I don't think that's something.
Well, okay.
Your communications, I remember reading. That you had suggested that rates would be renewed as necessary. Or something like that. I can't find that community. You wanted your email.
I, I thought that these terms, uh, I ordered in March, then I just ordered today. Now, this week, the dollars even going. I just ordered a box that's possibly in the air this month, but I ordered in November and I was small. So it would be instead of making five dollars a sample, I want to.
Could you order stuff?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's actually in your memo. Yeah, it says, so.
As needed.
I would ask if the fee schedule would start July first, twenty twenty-three and would be reviewed on an as-needed basis.
Yeah, because you're ordering stuff all during the year.
Well, that's what generator.
Yeah, I missed that.
Nonmobile and most traction.
Right.
Right.
Yep.
Well, that could have been a commitment to consent.
That could have been.
When it's trying to say that. But each annual plan. Also, these needs, and you guys don't get all their work or your lineups to resolve.
Okay, so what is the pleasure of the board then?
Just to read word.
Do it.
Said and renewed. Um, and as needed bits.
That's what I was wondering.
Okay. I, um, oh, there we had the wastewater um, testing rates. And. In the uh. Description con, whatever the second con, you have set and renewed on an as-needed basis. Is that? Renewed and. Yeah, because if you can get something for eighty percent of price by ordering six months' worth. You're not going to order the rest of the year's worth. And then, I mean, this will. If you do this, we'll just spank you.
I won't spank him, just for the record.
I think it would be more important. Quarterly because like uh, Melissa and I have talked about when it's been no quartering, so it's not. You know, a burden on her and also on that of every week you're constantly doing this. And everything's changing. So if we hear that quarterly.
And that's what your supplies would be quarterly or yearly?
Well, I mentioned.
Okay.
Well, I mean, make it quarterly.
I'll second that.
Gives it more.
Yeah. And all right, inflation.
So reviewed on a quarterly basis?
Got it.
Yep.
And I did have a second for that, correct?
Second.
Oh, Kurt had a, okay. Are there any other questions of uh, or whatever on this? Okay. I'll call a question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a motion to approve Ozaki County Highway bids for hot asphalt patching, asphalt patching. You know, weird. Hot asphalt patching. Um. So I don't know if we need to go over this again. We had quotes. They're high. I decided to reject all of them. We did a little bit more looking into what the county could do. Um, for us, and it came out to be nine thousand five hundred and ten. Dollars and eighty cents, really eighty cents. Okay.
So what did you figure that our costs were going to be in those?
Well, it would be covered and turned it all. So I said, we need to help with whatever we needed. And he said, it's, it would be the guy in the paper. And he says, it's going to be the guy in the paper, red truck and well. He said that I listened on ice. So and I did talk to the owner and I'm twenty-five in manager. The work role was. Self that is part of that, so it's not really trying to blame.
Yeah.
But water can sound dry, but it's blocking the way, so. When we have time, we are going to hopefully. Three quarters of that is going to stay either gravel or it's going to put grass in and we pass that rock mark.
That's excellent. That's awesome.
Yeah, five inches, is that three and two or is that all one shot?
Over on the lock, that would be strictly three inches. It is common binder.
I mean, in the five inch ones, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Again, this is something that, I mean, we need to take care of these patches. Talked about this last time.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm going to have Ozaki County do that to face of fifty, ninety-five and eighty cents.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion and I have a second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. All right, now we have. We have, uh, this was emailed out today and obviously was in front of you when you got here. This is regarding well one. Um, so. Basically, what's going on is, as we were, uh, it was a booster pump we were replacing, correct? They pulled all the pipe out of the ground and I don't know if anybody's driven by seeing that over there. I had a. Field trip that I took to take a look at it. A lot of the pipes are being eaten. Uh, from the outside or from the inside out and I will just say I had a discussion with Roger today. I gave him a call. To see if there were any maintenance records, anything that's been done. Uh, his, his. Answer to me was that, um, he's not aware of anything that's been done since he was there, so he believes all of that material. Is like original. Which?
It was from.
It was from him. Uh, so anyway, if you look at some of those pipes, they don't look like they've been in the ground for forty or fifty years or whatever. Um, that being said, without looking in the archives, I think it'd be pretty hard for us to figure out what was done. Um, he said there may be some records down at the shop, but.
I didn't look in.
Yeah.
I looked up here, I didn't find anything.
Right.
Well.
Okay, so anyway, this is, so this is what we have in front of us. This is, Eric, if if you want to explain a little bit more, but. I do believe this is for replacing everything, um, with an option of not replacing. Um. Thirty-five feet at the top, is that correct?
Yes, but. Uh.
Says replace optional.
That's not in the water, so that has been. Even ways to clear for use that pipe. Um, the pump was in there, was not to spec or. The herd of everything, so he. The wells designed to factor downs, the pump was put in, not the back. Uh, the pipe inside was, I I don't know. It went from four inch, six inch or four inch and and you had clanks in there.
The base was made out of plywood surrounded by pavement or by concrete. It was pretty impressive.
So if you have the fact there for the. There was something we got out of this year from the V R and then obviously she couldn't see. The well I see was also that. Uh, we have some deficiencies. Uh, where the injection points were, not rings, uh, it would be an air breather, there was a one inch, they were. Two were acquired.
The pump wasn't even mounted to the.
Wasn't even. The base, so when the pump started up, it turned. Uh, they never, you know, guarantees, uh, bumbles that are sitting on wires, those then.
It's literally like somebody went in there with submersible pump. I was like, this should do for municipal water and put it in there and connected it to the water tower. It's pretty ridiculous.
Um, yeah.
So. Uh, as. Not the job, but well, two, you guys approved the fixing of well two, boost pump, everything. Um, we went from. Three hundred gallons a minute to five hundred. Now, this will be something in a couple of years, so that will pull that as well. So every ten years they recommend more than that. So essentially, we can vary to make sure it's good. Um. Right now, the boost pump at well two is the way that it's supposed to, and now a lot of. With which pipe would be needed. Um, this year we fixed that they worked together. When we are actually almost done with your output out of this loan.
And what do we have budgeted for this?
Um, it's originally ten years, that's four thousand. Obviously, you need to know about the pipe not being replaced and also. The well pump, the the well pump is shot. He said, I'll put it all back together and doesn't want to put it back in, uh, oh, you put it back together, we're here to be here for. Not interested. They answer, that's the answer. We need to be funded today for the. For the motor of the car, the very room. The booster pump was probably from.
But we budgeted.
For the pump replacement and inspection. But what led to this, you get the going through that and that's. Last year, we did not know if we're finding all of the stuff though and then even fix it. I I did ask Eric, well, what if? We did do the pipes, we did replace things that are assumed we were required by the state. Um, saving that's in how. So Eric's point, if you just say that I'm gonna pull up the pipe again next year.
Oh, and the pipe too. I mean, if you look at it, so I went there while the guys were there working on it and I said, well, you know, you can rub the stuff up. It doesn't look so bad. It doesn't look corroded. He goes, he goes, he goes, okay, so he took it, you know. Like basically like a Dremel with a wire brush type thing on it and wiped away all the stuff. There's kidding. I mean. Three quarters of the way through the pipe. So I mean, it's, it's, it needs to be replaced. There's no ifs, ands or buts about that, or we're going to be doing this whole thing in a couple of years again anyway. It's just a matter of what do we replace? How do we go about it? And, um. How are we going to pay for it? Right.
They're there now and.
How did this happen? I mean, how, I mean, okay, there's been people on this board for quite a few. You have been on this board for six years, right? You don't know any, you never heard any of that? With, uh. With that damage.
Well, I don't know as well, whenever, were the pipes ever pulled up while we were on the board?
Well, they pull that, how many times did they pull that in the last year?
Two years. They don't have credit because they don't do it now. And when we talked earlier about, you know. Municipal is a little more expensive, but. I have. No ties to municipal, I just know what I can do and if you're gonna tell. If it's John, they're gonna tell me it's young. And that's why. Even as college, I work in them, that's who they've always used to help with my. Are we liable to inspect and we like to report them? And grab also.
So to. So to get back on the topic of how are we going to pay for this?
So.
Yeah, we cannot do it. We have to figure out how to.
Okay.
Well, I think there.
Well, super.
Yeah, this is water. Right.
So I will put out there as much as I don't want to. You guys did approve up to thirty-five thousand to buy these products. The baby gum. Uh, I think as.
This is hard for him to say. It gets a hard one to say.
I guess as the record. On this position, Brandon and I won't be in the place of the operator here for water. It's if you're a problem or people get sick. And they can come after us and you can ask Brandon when we went, he said, you threw up, we'll take your word. And I'm not gonna stick up for you. So on it, we have thirty-five thousand. For baby stuff. To purchase from the county. I've. I've released that. To pay for this because this is. So I'm gonna give you three options. So I just said enough. I think three options here, either A, you can just send down your huge, your active water utility, you just had auto part. You're allowed to go negative, right? Need a year technically do that. Make the water utility more than this year. That's out of alignment. Um, two, we can give you to our different general reserves, right? I always said that from there too. Um, around some, uh, three is the scanning, that's what they're. You have thirty-five thousand, you're running the C I P, what the scrap is talking about, again, no longer began this year.
So our was now.
Our will be using the reserve.
Oh, that's the reserves option.
Yeah, that's we're talking the same thing.
I didn't know.
So the rate increase, perspective rate increase, it's gonna give us like sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars. Extra in revenues. Per year.
And that's separate.
No, but I mean, in two years, you can pay this with with increased, uh, revenue.
Uh, I think Tiffany mentioned, or did you say Arba? But I mean, you have that amphibious vehicle, I know it's out of there and then in a general.
Reserve fund.
It's in a reserve fund.
Right, so, um. Why, why not leave? You need the vehicle that's gonna come, correct?
So I'll, I'll just go with the. Reversment is that is our chipper truck, that is our brine truck, that is. If we got some of the markets are little baby dog, that's, you know, not a big company. I will tell you that the gas tank a lot. And I had to reach out to other municipalities to find chipper trucks, we did.
Uh, God. Um, that, uh, so if something is, uh, budgeted for twenty-four in. I know the next one can mean there's nothing to take that, uh, and, uh. And allocate that to that one.
Well, we technically don't have anything budgeted for twenty twenty-three yet.
Well, the amphibious vehicle was.
And again, well, I can go into this maybe with finance and fees for next year's fifteen. So you probably see that. So we gotta look at it is every year you're approving just the next three projects and then four years after that, there's like the questions. So the amphibious vehicles are like that, which was. If you're asking, you know, no longer do that project, well, I don't need to start to worry about it. And whether you want to use those funds, which were archived with the power reserves, that would be my substitute. So you need to be the reserve.
Well, and that was the other question, um, so. Wendy, as you know, is coming back to meet with. Chris and Melissa this coming week. I wanted to, I asked Chris right when this happened. I said, what do we have in reserves? What does that look like from that hundred thousand that we originally said this year is going to be for something that would come up, right? Uh, currently, I think there's sixty-eight thousand in that that we haven't touched, right? I mean, okay, so we have funds there. That being said, there's some dollars for insurance from what I understand or payroll or whatever that they're going to be figuring out. So. My question to him was, can we go ahead and approve this, knowing that we have some place that we can pull the funds from? And then figure out at. Once we have all the information, figure out where we're going to pay this from, knowing that we need to get this on order in these parts, because the longer we stall, the longer this wells down and. More of a case for something else happening, so.
Nobody's gonna sue us for not taking that chicken branches. But they're gonna sue us if they're water.
Right. Right.
Got it, got it.
But isn't this what the ARBA funds for, something like this?
Yeah, infrastructure.
Yeah.
We don't have perfect funds anymore.
Yeah. Okay, I, because I thought that was an option.
Available as a resource.
Okay, Bruce.
So to be proper, I said, your head said it was allocated for twenty-four, but the splash pad was actually allocated for twenty-three. Um. Is there a way that that money, I I mean, to do it properly? Can you crisscross that stuff and? Leave that on the table and pay for this?
Well, again, I think it's allocated, it's in reserves, it's earmarked, but it's not. We don't have to use it for that type of thing.
Right.
Right, so it's all, it's just a big lump sum of money. We've got this wish list of things in the past that we've said we want to do this and earmark this and do that. We haven't set aside money for any of those. We have this lump sum of money that we can do something.
So we could just take it out of.
Well, yeah, and at the end of the day, you gotta fix it no matter what.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're required to fix it, bring everything up to court.
Right, so. So again. There's nothing that's.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve this. Is it for thirty-one seventy-two or do we gotta add the sixteen eighty-one to it?
Thirty-two seven fifty-three.
If you want all the pipe, then it would be added. Pipe, so whatever that told, what is that?
Thirty-one oh seventy-two plus sixteen eighty-one?
Yeah.
Well, thirty-two five. Thirty-two seven fifty-three.
Thirty-one.
Okay, so, so is that a motion?
That's a motion from me.
Okay, I think Tiffany got it. Uh, all right, I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Do I have to say where it's coming from?
That's what I'm saying. I don't know that they have that.
I heard that your first often, or sorry, the after that, something where you want to do, use no reserves in some way or form. Um, as I presented, talking about, we have another body here that are here next week to. Confirm some numbers, which at that point I'll know how much, how much we actually have. Questioned for healthy reserves, so if I can, if we have enough there to do this, um, then I'll forward that. Otherwise, if you completely talk. And you go to C I P, which we will take away this time. Um, my preference that we need to do what we did previous time and the compliance committee, the compliance committee made that allocation change. Um, so we do that, I'll let us.
So that's my question though, is do we have to, do we have to say right now, this, this minute, where this money is coming from? Or can we just make it vague so that, because again, then it's another step we gotta jump through and everything. Anyway, it's got to come back to the board anyway. So.
I'll just make a motion approved with them.
Okay, that would be, again.
Yep. Perfect.
Okay. Do you have another question, Bruce, before?
I just wanted you to make sure that that, uh, that truck stays in your other, uh, we that will.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? We have that motion, uh, in a second on this. All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Not as bad as you thought it was gonna be, guys. Come on. This could be interesting. Uh, okay, now we have a discussion and possible action on simplified rate increase. So we just heard from our auditor telling us that, hey, we're in the negative. Um, we've kind of known this for a little while here. Uh, we haven't done a water rate increase since twenty nineteen, I don't believe, and that was three percent. This, uh. This would make it, well, there's two motions here. One is to approve Eller's assistance. In in doing this for us, rather than us having to take this on, if I'm. Correct on that. The other motion would be to actually approve a simplified rate increase filing, so to actually do it. Um, now I will talk about your water bills that are in front of you. Okay, everybody got their water bill?
All right, yeah.
Yeah, right now.
The right name on it.
So if you look at, if you look at your water bill, what's this? Everybody, everybody on it, right? Everyone got it?
No, it's my main name.
All right, we all on the same page? All right, so if you take a look at your water bill, this eight percent increase, this is showing what the change would be for the water. You see, you've got. Water five eighth inch, um, that would be the increase like mine says, for instance, ninety-four thirty-nine, mine on an eight percent increase would go up from ninety-four thirty-nine. To one oh one ninety-four on an average bill, so we're looking at like. Eight bucks. Average bill. I don't know if you can afford.
I don't know if I agree with.
Well, now's the time to talk. What's that?
I, I don't know. I think eight percent is steep. I really do. I mean, we have gone through a lot here. This past year, I just. He piled it on and piled it on to get to the.
I agree.
Well, just in last year alone.
Oh, I understand.
Also, we're making this on that much, yes, there were.
I get. I get that, but I get these phone calls from people still knew about what we did last year and it's, you know, you gotta try and sell this and I'm getting tired of trying to sell the same old song and dance between everything else. So if anyone else wants to go sell it next election cycle, good for you. I don't want to.
Next election cycle, good for you, I don't want to say that I'm going to.
Well, and that's why we're a board of how many members, right, so everyone's got their own individual opinions, I would say, if we look at what we just discussed about well, and all these water mains that are breaking and everything else, and we're already in the red, I mean, do we want to go down that route of A? From what we had in twenty nineteen, when we had to increase it by how much and people flying off the handle? Or, you know, C, I guess even worse is going and doing what. Port Washington just had to do for their, for their water upgrade of sixty seven percent, right? But I understand where you're coming from, because as soon as I heard eight percent, I went, gotta be kidding me. You know, it's just something more and more and more, I have hands up everywhere, okay, we'll go, we'll go Bruce first.
Bruce. Uh, um. Can you do that gradually? Uh, I mean, does it have to be eight percent? Next year?
Eight percent is gradually.
No, I'm saying, can you do?
Eight percent if you fix something.
Three, six, eight, or something like that, spread it out.
Can you turn the AC again? It's really hot here. Oh, right.
So.
So it's going to go up every year, correct?
Doesn't have to, no.
Just this.
Year, you're not going.
Yeah.
And I think. Again, personally, if somebody calls me, which I had, and says, hey, why are you doing this, I, I'll show them pictures of the pipe, I'll show them pictures of the potholes, I'll show, you know, all this other stuff going, we really had to sit here and look at, do we have the money for this, because it's just not in our water utility? I am not a proponent of raising anything, I'm sick of it, just like everybody else is, but I think knowing what our condition of our water infrastructure is. What our challenges are going to be in the next few years, with, even with all these road reconstruction proj- projects and how much this is costing us. I mean, it's, it's just.
You gotta pay for it.
It's crazy, and I don't like it.
So then your response will be when we raise property taxes, okay?
We will still be the lowest costing water utility in the counties.
Right.
That's, I, I was going to ask Chris, I had asked Administrator Jenkins about checking out some of the other municipalities in the area. As to what their annual or quarterly water bills are compared to what Fredonia's is. Were you able to gather any?
Yeah, so we don't have one that's kind of, but they will, they're, that's right, but they'll. And if you look at the, you know, everybody, but they apply here, charge, they, they're, our meter guards, they comply, they're about twenty seven. Okay, that's the new requirement. And then you want to do the rates, which. Eight, uh, four oh nine, there was an whole house, it was just about a thousand gallons, they're. That is why they're all.
I, I, I hear you, Josh, I'm not.
I'm just saying, the average person, they're going to understand, they're going to look at their bill and say, I got taxed eighteen percent last year, what are you guys doing up there, and now you're tagging on another eight percent, that's all they're going to look at it as, they're not going to understand, there's a separation between water sewer and property.
So I'm thinking to your button step, so. All of this would be having on the pass. And only anything that I say today, you guys have not heard about it, I did not understand anything to you guys. Um, so I think said, you know, when you look at next year. The original additional value, okay, in the, 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 the numbers that are now beginning to let us. I sent the emails to our staff and to the president that despite putting that on, it drops no rates, that's, you know, and I'm not texting, no rates, I don't have to. It's not even being direct, that you create change in kind of way, you can get to that, all I can say, there are no rates that drop half a percent next year. Um, in talking with Todd, Chase, with your, uh. Your financial advisor, all of this, all of the things that we're talking about. We're not planning on going to do it until spring of next year, which means that there, I did not quite learn that any, it's all that buddy, it's taken on. More like twenty four. So again, not, I'm like, I think it comes up. Your budget that you're going to pass will be advanced tax rate. So the only increase that's a better at that will be this, I mean, this is the only thing that the resident will come and take off. Uh, but from a tax rate perspective, you're not going to get hours, I'm going to get a state. Permission.
So is that because of the uh, market street bill? Is, is, you make our last payment twenty four, right?
Um, no, I, that may, that may, it's supposed to take, you have one more year. It's that your cash value, uh, doesn't part of that, you just stand and all of that will be back in our souls.
Mm-hmm.
That being said, an eight percent increase is going to add, what, sixteen thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars to the water utility?
Yeah.
One more one.
In two years, we can buy the well, and then in two years after that, we can.
Well, as, as Eric would show you, it's one water main break. Right? I mean, one large water main break.
Yeah, or maybe two.
So, again, I'm.
That's fine, we'll be back in twenty four doing another one, or twenty five doing another one. It's just the way it is.
That's.
Next time we dig some up, we'll pick it right though.
Well, but to Josh's point, I mean, nothing ever goes down, you know, so it's, I get it, I do.
Sometimes you just can't tell the tax period what's in one year, because the answer is other man's.
All right, but I, I also think that this is where we sit here and we go, we need additional growth to, to be able to pay for these things, and where is that coming from? Anyway. So again, there'd be, there would be two motions for this, right, one, we have to authorize ours to. Assist us in doing this, and then the other one would be to actually do it, so.
Yeah, they're correct, they're worth five hundred bucks.
Five hundred bucks for the hours, correct?
I'm making more of your brothers. Assistance on this water rate increase.
I have a motion. I have a motion, and I have a second, any other discussion on that? I will call the vote, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, aye. Right. Motion carries with one name. All right, the next would be the motion to approve a simplified rate increase filing.
Now, is that going to be four and eight percent, or it's eight percent? Just a figure that they're working with? Or are they going to try and get? All the PSC will allow us? Or do you have a figure in mind?
Eight percent, but yes, the, that's Eric.
They will, yeah. Like in for Russia, you know, they'll, they'll tell us. You need eight percent, or whatever. Okay, I'm making motion to approve. The simplified rating for styling.
All right, I have a motion.
I can't afford to know why we're going to go up either. I, I don't want to have to go down to the creek with the tail.
I'm saying, I mean, you got a general election next year, I have to hold off here as much as I can, you want to do a three percent, you want to do a four percent, mind with me, but I'm not going to chew off an eight percent.
That's why I had to set that up, that was even possible.
Well, we've done it before.
It sounds like the eight percent is what the PSC is recommending, so it doesn't necessarily mean that, I guess, we'd have to do that, but from, again, a standpoint of what's broken, what needs to be fixed, that's kind of weird. Feel like we could use all we can get at this point.
Is there a way to bring this back after? Next year?
We have to.
Yeah.
We have to do it the second, no.
The second.
No. We can start it at a particular quarter, but we have to get to application in this year.
This is the revenue base, it can be cost. Right, to meet costs for.
Exactly. To meet costs with our fund, is that what you're saying?
Well, why, they recommended a, they, they, that rate for rate equals. That's a recommended, like Josh has said. They did, I mean, that's a quite a high.
You could make it even easier than sixty percent if you wanted to.
I get it.
Well, they did important.
So to answer your question, no, there's nothing that says that we need to do an eight percent increase, that's what we can do. Or we could just. Do nothing at. The second, think about it for a little while too, I guess there's nothing saying we need to do it.
Can this be tabled then? Or you wouldn't recommend that?
I would ask what you would do in the next. In my recommendation, you have everything to be, in your, you know. Eight months now, and I've seen enough water rates, and well, menus, and everything else, but no.
You have the table already, correct?
Go second.
There's no second?
I'll stack it in.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Are we prepared to call a question here? I will, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, aye. How many needs?
We have a division?
Yeah. We might, let's do a real call vote. Uh, all those in favor, I'll start with Bruce.
Aye.
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 Name.
Okay, so we have two nays. All right. All right, motion carries. All right, now we're going to move on to the, some items that were discussed in planning commission. Uh, the first one is a zoning change request for seven oh nine Martin Drive. If you recall, these were all um, zoned A one, and they were. Presented to be, uh, and proposed to be rezoned in RS one, single family residential. The planning commission is recommending and did recommend um, these to be approved at the board level.
Chairman. Uh, they already did the, they're already working on this, right?
Well, they did the uh, flats, which they had to do, the, the, you know, the zoning change and then the flats, so the first one again is to uh. To do the zoning change. Actually, we already proved the flat.
Yeah, we couldn't do the zoning change, and so we had to tap them, so we had, while we were changing. I'll make a motion to approve the zoning change for seven oh nine Martin Drive.
All right, I have a motion. I have a motion and a second, is there any just more discussion? Adding two more residential lots to the village, I think is a good thing. I'll call the vote, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. The next is a motion to approve uh, the zoning change request for seven oh five Fredonia Avenue in Fredonia, obviously, that's where we are here, I'm getting a little tired, guys. So, it's nine o'clock, anyway, only two hours. Okay. Um, this one was, again, it was recommended to us from the planning commission, this is changing it from uh, what was basically a duplex lot into a single family residential, we had two. We had two letters uh, that came through from residents, um, supportive of this change, saying this is a good idea, they're doing the right thing, and it's a good use of the property, so again, we uh, recommended it to the board for approval.
Yeah, both of those letters came to inform the trustees.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, a second and a third. Any discussion you guys? Yeah, we are, let's call the vote, all those in favor, aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Sorry, all right, finally, we have a motion to approve CSM twenty three dash three, which is um, you just, thank you, yep, industrial park land. Um, again, this was. Proposed, if we all recall, I'm not going to go through the entire thing, but there was an error when we sold the first lot, now we're parceling uh, different. Different lots for different uses and different buyers, um, so that we can keep selling these lots to people. So this would.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously, all right.
Motion to adjourn in a closed session, pursuing to the agenda.
Here. I have a motion, and uh, what can I do for you?
I just gave you the point of order, if you want to take. On this item, fire, you should, you're close setting.
Do we have?
Do you have anything in here?
No. I would say, everybody, now.
Yeah, just keep it, it takes us a second. Yeah, I got that motion a second, all right, I'm going to call the vote, starting with. Okay, so can we? Okay, let's start out, yeah, let's start with Kurt, yeah. Uh. Aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye. And not available. Uh, correct, uh, motion carries unanimously, well, with one absent.
That's all right, we pulled them so.
Yeah. We're gonna, are we good?
We're good.
All right, so we are in open session, um, and. There's no action needed, so we'll move on, do we have any correspondence, anybody know?
No.
Items for future consideration?
All right, then do it here.
All right, I have a motion this, and a second discussion, all those in favor, motion carries, we are out of here at nine forty two.